Call a meeting now. Ask everybody to stand and give places to flag. Flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Callan Township for our Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll open our meeting with remarks from Commissioner Mark Evans.
Thanks, Jane. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We're all in this together. Just a reminder, only questions or statements regarding an agenda item will be entertained under citizens to be heard at the top of the meeting. All other matters will be recognized during public comment at the end of the meeting. News many have been dreading, the long anticipated detour of Route 30, 320 Manor Avenue has been announced by PennDOT. This work is required to connect utilities for the new My Place development and will begin Monday, June 12th. The road will be fully closed 24/7 and work could take up to two weeks to complete. Yes, it will be an inconvenience for us all, but it's got to be done. I'm grateful PennDOT chose to delay the closure until the end of the school year. A detailed map of the detour route can be found at callantownship.org. Now for news I know should make you smile. The date for our 15th Annual Cowan Community Day has been announced, Saturday, September 8th. Here's hoping for spectacular weather. The national... Is it the 9th? It's the 8th or the 9th. I'm always, always willing to be wrong. Now for news I know, the national COVID emergency has been ended. There were some very scary years. We lost friends, loved ones, businesses, and the emotional well-being of our youth. We were the first generations in over 100 years to experience the tragedy of a pandemic. We can honor all that we lost by remembering how lucky we are to have made it through alive. Congratulations. Yesterday, our Cowan Privileged Citizens Group celebrated their 50th anniversary. Many of you may not be familiar with who the Cowan Privileged Citizens are, so I'll share something I wrote after being a guest speaker for them at their November 2022 meeting. When we hear privileged, our ears tend to prick up with questions. No, the Cowan Privileged Citizens do not get the winning lottery numbers ahead of time. They don't get special treatment from the police. They don't even get to cut the line at the post office. They're not privileged in that sense. You see, to join the Privileged Citizens, you have to be over 60 and live in Callan. Their ages run the gamut from 60 to well over 100. They meet monthly for fellowship entertainment and they enjoy the occasional bus trip. They also give back. Their annual food and clothing drive benefits the Coatesville Y. Really, we're the privileged ones. We're privileged to have them as part of our community. It's often said that our civilization is defined by how we honor legacy. By keeping this vital group going, we're building a stronger future. Speaking of privileged, not that long ago, the right to vote was given to only a privileged few. Your vote is your voice. Next Tuesday, May 16th, is the 2023 municipal primary election. Don't miss your chance to be heard, no matter who you vote for. Please, vote. You can find your polling place on the map at callantownship.org. If you know you live in Cowan 1, it's right here at the Municipal Building. Cowan 2 and 4 at Coatesville High, and Cowan 3 is at the CASD District Building on Zen Road. Lastly, spread kindness, everyone. Anger, grudges, resentments are not worth our time or energy. Compassion, empathy, peace, and love, these are what make the world go around and the greatest gifts any of us can give or receive.
Thank you for those kind words of wisdom, Commissioner. Moving forward, we're going to now have a presentation for the Cohen property with the concept of the overlay district. Do they have someone to represent them here? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is this okay, or can you hear me without it?
They won't be able to hear you.
People at home.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Eli Khan. I own a real estate development company called Econ Development Corp. We have been developing in Cowan Township for over 35 years. I think the most significant project we did was the Acme Anchored Shopping Center called Cowan Village, which was probably about 35 years ago. And it was at that time, 35 years ago, that I met Alan and Michael Cohen and their father and their uncle, who started Cohen Brothers' facility at 4109 Lincoln Highway in 1950. This business occupies approximately 29 acres of land that runs from Route 30, Business Route 30, Lincoln Highway, north up to what was proposed to be the connection of Geo Carlson Boulevard. To the west is the Cowan Village Shopping Center. To the northwest is a large apartment complex, and to the east is a large residential project. Alan Cohen continues to run this business every day. It is a truck repair salvage facility. And as Commissioner Evans just mentioned, many businesses didn't make it through COVID. The Cohens have survived COVID, multiple recessions, multiple economic issues that have occurred over the last 73 years that they've been in business. We have been talking to Cowan Township for the last 35 years about the continuation of the use of this business, about the township's interest to connect Geo Carlson Boulevard through the back of their property. Those discussions occurred 20, 25 years ago. Much of the 29 acres that is covered by trucks is in floodplain. The areas that you see on the plan in front of you, sketched out as townhouses, are really the only parts of the property that are technically buildable under today's requirements. We find ourselves in a very precarious situation. We've been talking to the township for many years about potential residential use of the property. For whatever reason, the timing has not fallen into place in conjunction with their business. The Cohen family has an opportunity to sell this business to a group that will continue this use. It is a fairly easy transaction for them to contemplate. But financially, it's not really the best option for the family. The best option for the family would be to develop this property into a residential community of some greater density than the current TV1 and R4 zoning allows. As I'm sure most of you are aware, the front part of the property is owned TV1, the rear part of the property is owned R4. We have, over the last 35 years, discussed multiple different uses for the property. Not too long ago, we thought we had Aldi, and we were negotiating an agreement with Aldi, which was the first commercial use other than what's there now that we really had anybody interested in. And we all know what happened. Aldi, Kmart got sold, Lomax bought it, Lomax had extra space. It was a much easier transaction for Aldi, and quite frankly, it's a better location for Aldi. It's got a traffic light access that this property would never have. And honestly, having built the Cowan Village Shopping Center next door, having Aldi next to Acme would not have been good for Acme. It's been somewhat of a surprise that Acme Market has survived here all of this time. They only sign five-year leases. Any residential density in walkable proximity to the Cowan Village Shopping Center, from my perspective as a developer and from most planners' perspective in every township, is a good thing. Walkability is what people want these days. Right now, this property employs a handful of people. The walkability is almost irrelevant to those folks. So we've looked at this property, really almost throwing the zoning code out and saying, if we had our choice, what could we do here? That would be something that we could stand up here and be proud of and say to the township, this is really a good thing for the township, and also be slightly more economically advantageous to the owners as opposed to just selling the use, the property as it is. I do work all over the county. It is impossible to get this use permitted anywhere else in the county, which makes it highly desirable for people who do this. And there are other people in the region, in the state, throughout the country that do this work. Through COVID, we've all seen what's happened to the value of automobiles. The same thing has happened to the value of trucks. Alan has sold trucks out of here in the last three years at stunning prices because of supply and demand. And because this business has been here for 73 years, it's known throughout the region for people who deal in truck parts and use trucks. So what we're... We came in a year and a half ago on a Zoom call to present this plan along with another plan that we were working on up on Parkside Drive. And soon thereafter, we were told the township was pursuing their own zoning changes. So we said, okay, well, we'll just wait. We had conversations with Ray Ott, your planner, about some tweaks we would need to the zoning, the proposed new zoning, to effectuate a plan like this. And we waited and waited and waited, and then we're told, okay, that's off the table now. We're kind of starting over. So we're here because the Cohens find themselves in a position where we really can't wait until the township figures out where they want to do an overall zoning overlay along the Route 30 corridor or anywhere else in the township. And what we would like to propose to the township is that we submit an overlay district, which I've done dozens of times in communities. We would call it something like the Cowan Village Residential Overlay District. It would be designated over this property. It would keep the underlying zoning there and create a set of new regulations that would effectively be able to do a project like this. We have had some discussions about apartments, townhouse apartments, regular apartments. The code, current code, allows those things under the multifamily townhouse use development district, but not in the kind of quantity that is really needed. And given the nature of this property and the two distinct developable areas, when this project is done and there's no more trucks parked all over the wetlands and floodplain, it's going to be a beautiful swath of green that runs through these two projects because we're not proposing to connect them. Proposing to have access to the southern portion off of 30 and the access from the back off of Park, right? Park Road? Park Drive, right. So we kind of know what we need to do. The impervious coverages that you have are okay. The building coverages that you have are okay. We just need to tweak some setbacks between units, some side yard setbacks, some things like that. And given the fact that the property really doesn't abut any existing residential, it doesn't have anybody that we're going to offend if we come in with an overlay district that slightly modifies some of your setbacks and things like that, our goal would be to come in with an overlay and really push it hard through the township to be able... Because the position the Cohens are in right now is if this takes a year and a half, and we're kind of kicking ourselves that we didn't do this a year and a half ago, but we figured, okay, the township's changing the zoning. That'll take six months, and we won't need to spend that money to go and propose an ordinance ourselves. But the Cohens are in a situation right now where a potential buyer of the business is looking for an answer. And we're really here tonight to see if we can get, again, just an idea as to whether the township would accept a consideration of an overlay district, again, that just affects this property. And that's the purpose of an overlay district. And if they would consider reviewing it, passing it on to the County Planning Commission and your own planning commission, so we can potentially see this become a walkable residential community, certainly more in line with the neighborhood. And really, from the township's perspective, I've served on the planning commission in Westchester. It's rare a township gets an opportunity to really make a huge impact. I mean, most projects, or these little projects that come along, this use has been here for 73 years. And there's a chance it's here for another 73 years. We can get this done, there'll be a really nice residential walkable community. I think it would be a benefit to everybody in the township. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't have a lot of technical information. The plan that you all have does have a zoning data tabulation that shows some of the little changes. I don't know if they're overly relevant to you guys at this point in time. We would submit, again, a full zoning overlay, which would deal with, it would be a map amendment, and it would be a text amendment with this new zoning classification over this property.
Can you just talk about the maximum density? So you went, right now, it's, I guess, allowed four dwelling units per acre?
Right.
That says?
Yes. So right now, it allows about 116 units. We're proposing 100. So what happens a lot of times in zoning codes is it allows it, but you can't fit. And the reason here you can't fit is because of all of the unusable area in the township. So all of this area, which is mostly now covered by trucks, would all go back to green and very quickly get vegetated by wetland and floodplain type vegetation once the trucks are gone.
Yeah.
Correct. It just, the bulk area requirements just don't allow you. And there are areas that we've looked at to try to squeeze a few units here and there to make it a little bit more efficient. These units are 20-foot wide. Your current ordinance only allows 24-foot wide townhouses. Some of these townhouses would be a little deeper than others because most of the home builders want a variety of sizes of townhouses to be able to offer to their customer. So this plan would be tweaked. It's showing 100. It might be 95. It might be 105 when we're all said and done. But we have surveyed the property. We know where the wetlands are. There's currently zero stormwater on the property. We would obviously be designing this in accordance with your stormwater ordinance. So yeah, that's the situation with the density. It's just not worth... It's just better to sell the property to another business. It's just not enough density to make it work. The current code with 24-foot wide townhouses, you don't yield enough density to make it worth going through this process.
Mr. Khan, have you looked at the possibility of keeping the 24 but doing a stacked-style townhouse? More density, but keep that 24?
We have. Stacked townhouses are successful in some areas. There's a project in Westchester where... What was the lumberyard? No, the one, not Davis Lumber. What was the other lumberyard over behind? Hoffman Lumber. Look at you. Good one. Is a stacked townhouse job. It's a lot of young people because it's a lot of steps. We're finding, and it's in the borough of Westchester, there's another one on the other side of the borough of Westchester. We're finding, not that there's anything wrong with stacked townhouses, but you really limit the demographic. Because a stacked townhouse is a townhouse on top of another townhouse. So to get to the upper level townhouse, you have to walk up two full levels of steps to get to your living room, and then another level of step to get to your bedroom. So we did look at it, and will continue to look at it. But what we found is really most successful is a house that is, a townhouse that is appealing to young people, empty nesters, retired people. And candidly, at a price point, because where house prices have gone in the county is really insane, this has been a very successful... These will be three-bedroom townhouses, fully amenitized. There's no clubhouse or anything because it just doesn't have enough units to support that. But the 24 feet really affects the density. Now, could we split some? Could we do some stacked townhouses? We could look at that, but it's not the preferred route.
And these would be owner-occupied, correct? Or are they rentals?
No, this would be an owner... This would be a for-sale product. You can't control it, but this...
I'm just saying, as a property.
It's a great question because I am building right now in Exton on Route 30. In fact, our clubhouse just burned down over the weekend. Right behind, is that Philip and James at 30 and 100? Right behind Philip and James, we're developing 232 townhouse rental community for people who don't want to live in a new multi-story structured apartment complex, want to be able to pull right up. But to do that, we have, I was going to say, we have a clubhouse. We had a clubhouse. We'll be rebuilding the clubhouse. But a big pole and clubhouse, but we needed like over 200 units to be able to do that. We just don't have the area here to do this. So this is being designed as a for-sale product.
Okay.
I have a question about the floodplain. You're saying that 50% of this 29 acres is in a floodplain zone?
I would say probably more than that, actually.
So what do you do in that instance for building purposes?
We're built... What you're seeing here is built outside of the floodplain. So all of the area you're seeing that has townhouses on it or residential on it is not in the floodplain. It's all this area in between that crosses the creek and wraps around is all not in the floodplain.
So that wouldn't be developed at all, then?
No. It'll go back to a natural state. That happened. Yeah, yeah. Technically, it's like any other floodplain. You might be able to put a trail in it. And again, it's pretty interesting because in other projects in Cowan, we've actually done studies on land that is shown as floodplain, and we show it's not floodplain, like the Parkside property was that way. FEMA just takes aerials and says, this is floodplain, but you can actually do a study. We haven't studied that. It's a FEMA floodplain, but as Alan said, there's a pond here on the property. Alan, have you ever seen that pond flood? Right. And you've been there your whole life, right? So this area here is dry for the most part, and they have trucks on it. But from a development perspective, it's not developable. Oh, yeah, sure. Oh, God. Trails through there would be great, over by the pond. It could be awesome. And it could be tied into your sidewalk system on Park Drive or the people to the east. It could be, it would ultimately be part of a homeowners association. So there's a little legal issues. We have to get through that. It wouldn't be a public park unless the township said, hey, we'd like to make it a park. But you have some of the ballfields you have across the creek here are probably technically in floodplain to the south of the creek here off of, but you have ballfields there. So that's something that could be here as well.
My concern about the look of the thing, first of all, in Park Drive, all of the driveways exiting onto Park Drive, and I know this is just a conceptual thing, but just as an opinion, moving forward...
Yeah, Josh, I saw that. I already sent that back to the engineer. So you've got a cluster of units to the south and the north that have direct access on. So we would look to create some internal road network to get those driveways off of Park.
As well as enough overflow parking so they're not completely clogging?
Correct, correct. And again, the plan that we're showing, your current code requires two spaces per unit and half a space per 100 for overflow. We're showing on this plan 224 spaces. Your ordinance requires 250. So that may be part of our overlay district. Unfortunately, you cannot put stormwater management in the floodplain. So if you look at the plan, you see these little areas, these circular areas labeled SMV. These areas are the proposed areas where there would be stormwater management. In a perfect world, you look at all this land, you go like, it'd be great if we could shove that into the floodplain area. You're not allowed. So that's another limiting factor to the ultimate density of the property.
Is that a state rule? Is that an AR rule?
No, I think that's a county, county... Yeah, it could be. Yeah. I mean, the issue of floodplain is typically the soil in floodplain does not percolate water into it. Because it's generally more of a saturated...
If it floods, it's not going to work.
Exactly, exactly. Sure.
Every townhouse, Lorraine?
Yes, Lorraine.
Hi. Every townhouse, what I wanted to ask, how is the parking set up? Do you have one or two spaces outside of your townhouse?
Correct. You'd have a garage, at least a one-car garage, in some cases maybe two. And then you would have a space in front of the garage as well. And then there's overflow spaces scattered throughout the development.
Okay, so you do count the garage as a parking space?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Not just outside park?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. The other thing I wanted to ask, in terms of fire prevention type of thing, when you set up the homes, are you going to have actual fire?
Hydrants?
Like walls between?
Well, yes. The code, the International Building Code requires fire breaks between units. And then there would be fire hydrants. We would work with the Fire Marshal of Cowan to determine where fire hydrants would be.
Lorraine, they can't bury that. So this is just a zoning concept. Anything that our building code or fire code, we can't change that, and they can't change that.
You've adopted a national building code, as most municipalities do. It's not your own code. We have to follow that code.
So that they wouldn't be seeking, they could, but they wouldn't win because you have to prove that the geography of Cowan is such that it warrants a change in the building code. So any of the traditional building code or fire code requirements that we have today have to stay the same, yes.
Now, in the roofing, do you put any additional protections?
Just what's required by the national, uh.
Okay, nothing additional, just?
No.
And there's sprinklers, correct?
Well, if the, I don't know if the, if this township requires sprinklers. If you don't, they will not be. Sprinklers in these townhouses is brutal.
Right, right, speak up if I'm wrong, but I don't think we require this type of use to have sprinklers.
Well, we, we don't, but the building, the current building code requires townhomes to be sprinkled.
I'm pretty sure they don't.
Did you hear what I said? I'm, I'm sorry, Kristen, did you hear me?
Can I ask a couple of questions? Do you guys mind? Um, who would, so who would, if, if the Coens, if they said yes to this proposal, would the Coens see this through the development and then sell it after it's approved?
We would, we would proceed with, uh, hiring counsel to prepare the overlay ordinance. We would be submitting the ordinance as the applicant, the Cohen family. Um, and we have already spoken to several, you know, local and, and national, regional builders. Ultimately, the Coens will not be building these homes. A, a home building company would be building the homes. We would work with them, uh, to have concept sketches of what the houses would look like. We would look to, by the time we're really, maybe not the first meeting or second meeting that we're in front of the board or the planning commission, but at some point in the process, we would have a buyer for the property. We, there's been, uh, a considerably, uh, good amount of interest in the property if we can get this done. And largely because of the walkability of it. Most of these homebuilders love the idea that these people could walk next door to an Acme Market or get a Dunkin' Donuts or go to a bank or go to get their nails done or whatever.
Um, what about the environmental condition of the properties or something?
So the Coens last year completed some phase two work. There were, uh, some tanks that were removed in, in and around the area of the existing buildings. Um, there have been some soil samples taken throughout the property. Um, again, Alan has been on this site, I think, most of his life. Um, we feel very comfortable that there are no further issues. Obviously, it's a question that you ask, it's a question that a homebuilder will ask. And there will likely be some additional testing done, especially as we remove a lot of the inventory that's there. So that's kind of one of the things that's, you know, from our perspective. You know, if this is something the township will embrace, then the Coens, you know, they're not gonna stop their business, but they could start, because there's a lot of inventory there that's been there for a long time. So that, we'd like to start that process. If the township says, hey, listen, thank you, we're not interested, then, you know, none of it'll go away or maybe a little bit of a go away, you know, and then the new buyer would likely bring in whatever inventory they have. But, um, we have some work to do, obviously, to, to get rid of seventy-three years of equipment.
And that leads into the segue for the, for the timing. You said you don't have a year and a half. But is that just for the zoning part of it? Because I would think that with the zoning change and potentially if the board wants to see conditional use, which I'm not, I'm not putting that in their mind. I'm just saying if they, if they did, that process can take some time. But is, I would think the whole process, NPDS, land development is going to take a year and a half. Just, that's just reality. I mean.
It shouldn't. And I've done it in communities who want it. You know, we've come in with a plan, we go to the planning commission, the changes aren't, aren't overly difficult. And honestly, that is a big issue, Kristen. And if the township says, hey, listen, this is gonna take a year and a half.
Well, even just the, even just the permitting from the outside agencies and.
We're, we're seeing NPDS permits occur in, in eight months. Um, and again, from my perspective, if we have zoning, if we, if we know we're going through with this and it's just a matter of waiting for a permit, that's one thing. If it's a matter of the township spending a year and a half saying, yeah, we don't really know if we want this.
No, no, that's not what I was suggesting. That is, that's not what I was suggesting. I just, I'm thinking that a year and a half is not that long from beginning to end of, of, until you get a shovel in the ground.
It's, it's not, I think it can be done quicker than that. It, it can be done quicker than that. The reality for the Coens is we need to know that the township supports this. And if the, the zoning change part of it, I think can happen in six months. And, um, if the township wants this and they push their consultants and, 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 you know, again, this plan has been out there for a year and a half or so. It's a fairly benign plan. You know, a hundred townhouses on a property that has, you know, hundreds and hundreds of trucks on it. I mean, I would, if I were, uh, you know, a, a commissioner or representative of the township, it's something that makes a huge difference. You know, it, it can be pushed through, I think.
Eli, thank you. You know, I just wanted to say that, um, I personally was really happy to see you here tonight. One of the things that I've been adamant about since I originally ran, uh, for commissioner was that Lincoln Highway is the key to the future of Cowan. And if we leave Lincoln Highway looking the way it is, it will only get worse. And we will be forgotten as Coatesville gets millions of dollars poured into it and Downingtown gets millions of dollars. I have looked at that site a gazillion times picturing townhomes. Um, of course, when I look at them, I see, uh, you know, a sidewalk and, and the home, you know, pretty close to the curb and parking underneath or behind. But, you know, I, I don't see very much in, uh, your, um, overlay requests that's that different from what the zoning subcommittee was talking about for the Lincoln Highway District, which is what that would be. So, um, I, I thank you. I mean, that's.
Thank you, thank you.
Hopefully we can figure something out here.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
In addition to like townhouses, are there any other proposals or ideas that can develop, uh, businesses in that track?
No, there's so much vacancy in little retail centers around the township. Out, in thirty-five years, Aldi was the only true commercial use that we've seen on this property. We don't have a, we don't have a, a, a traffic light. You know, you're next to a shopping center, so to build something new here and have to charge twenty-five dollars a square foot because it's new construction, we can go next door to Cowan Village and rent a space for fifteen dollars a foot. It's just, there's just, there's frankly too much commercial space on Route thirty. And that's traditionally what happens in a very suburban municipality. I mean, and in the future, you know, ten years from now, there, every bank pad on Route thirty may be empty. Um, you know, you, you have little stores that kind of come and go in the neighboring shopping, both neighboring shopping centers. Um, you know, you're gonna get a new coffee shop, I think, across the street is a great proposal. You've got some recreational uses. I mean, some of the car dealers may go away in, in Cowan and then you'll have those buildings.
I was just wondering, because you see a lot of that.
We've tried because again, I don't really, we don't really want to be here seeking this. We're here because it's really, we've exhausted all other options. The options on the table really are sell the business or, you know, do a project like this.
Did you see a lot of townhouses today that have retail on the bottom floors?
You do, you do.
And that seems to complement, you know, both the housing industry as well as the need for businesses along, you know, Lincoln Highway corridor as well. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Does someone in the, uh, have their hand raised?
Mr. DeYoung?
Hello, everybody. It's Mark DeYoung, Twenty Beaver Run Road. This truck yard has, I'm here. This truck yard has been here since nineteen fifty.
I can't hear you, Mark.
I'm unmuted.
One more time for Mr. DeYoung.
Hello?
There is a JD. We're having some problems on this end because I, I just sent a text from my stack house and he says he can hear people, but for whatever reason, we are not hearing people on this.
Kristen, I'm sorry, can you, can you hear me?
Hi, hi, this is, this is Joseph Daniel Hagen. Can you hear me?
Apologize if this starts screaming.
Sorry, I don't, I don't know. Was I, was I heard?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're, we're having some technical difficulties.
That's okay. Uh, my name is Joseph Daniel Hagen. I live at two seventeen Park Drive, just up the road from where some of this, from what I could tell by the drawling is. Um, so I, I like the sound of some of this. I like the idea of the clearing out of the trucks and everything that is there and what's gonna create a green space because I am hoping that'll do something to help with, with some of the water. I know, I know he's, he had pointed out that some of the areas were outside of the floodplain, but that one section that's down at the corner where Park Drive turns into Geo Carlson, uh, even beyond the flood that we had in twenty twenty, before that, if we got like any measurable amounts of rain, that area would fill. And then, because people would drive down Park, they would get so far and they'd have to turn around. And so my concern is if they build there, will that not make that scenario worse? And also back some up to, to make our area worse even just during the normal rain beyond what we had in twenty twenty?
Yeah, I, I, I would say that you have a stormwater ordinance. We know we have to comply with it. You know, we're gonna, we have almost thirty acres site with about eight acres, nine acres of buildable area. So a lot of the area that again is covered with trucks that, you know, might prohibit storm, you know, floodwaters from moving. I, I'm confident that when this is redeveloped, we'll be able to meet your stormwater ordinance.
So could even improve on what's going on now?
A- absolutely.
Well, certainly I can't be against that, so I kinda like the sound of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Spalding?
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you are.
Okay, um, I, I, let me back up. I, I have an overall question and then I'll tackle that. But where do we stand with the overall rezoning of the rewrite of the entire rezoning for the township? And that went dead in the water. I sent a, I sent an email last week asking where it stood and I never received a plot, a reply. Where does that stand?
I guess we're still working on certain areas of the, uh, modifications and we still have time. So we haven't completed that process.
And when is the next?
I would say that we, we were.
Schedule.
Cheryl, nothing's been scheduled yet, but it's something that, you know, the board's had a lot of other issues that they've been dealing with. There's just, it's a, it's a big project to tackle. So they, we will probably at the next meeting try to get back, get that back on track and try to schedule some more meetings.
The reason I asked that is because I thought that, that there was a June deadline. You'd asked for an extension, deadline was June and it's already the middle of May.
Yeah, we'll have to be, we'll deal with. Yeah, we'll have to address the county's timeline when we, when we bring it back together.
Okay. Um, and then my question regarding to this proposal in particular is, do you, two questions. First, do you know at this point in time what you had, what you had, uh, designated or thought you were gonna put as a new zoning on this property? Did you cover that yet?
As far as the district, yes. And as far as the uses, yes, but we didn't get into the area and bulk requirements, no. There, and I had been in communication with Mr. Khan, knowing that this project had been presented and we were going to compare what his area and bulk requirements are on the sketch plan with what Ray Oat had put in. I, I didn't do the comparison because I, you know, I didn't, just didn't do that. We didn't get to that point. That was going to be one of the topics that we tackled at one of our work sessions.
Okay, so it was, you were foreseeing this to be townhouses?
Townhouses would be a principal use in.
In that district, yes.
All three of the Thorndale Village, uh, Lincoln Highway zones.
Yes.
Okay, um, then my only other question is, the, I understand that the Wedgewood Lake belongs to Wedgewood. And I'm told that it's clean and not polluted, but there is a small section lake on, if you look at this property on a, um, uh, you know, overall from the top, there's a small section lake which you show on your plan. It's not up now, so I can't tell you where, which is still there. What I, I, I have the same kind of concern, I guess, that the guy who lives down from that, which, does the water flow down from that little lake into the big lake or is it the reverse? Do you know?
I don't think anybody knows, Cheryl. I don't think anybody knows.
Um, well, certainly the Coens know.
It, it's hard to hear you, to be quite honest. She asked if you know which way the water flows.
From.
Ton of Wedgewood.
From the lake at, on the Cohen property.
She's asking about the lake. Where does the water flow from the lake?
On the Cohen property.
Into the what?
No, there is a big lake at Wedgewood.
It flows east. It flows east.
So that is from the Cohen property into the Wedgewood Lake.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think, I, I, I mean, I don't think it's a bad plan and I think it's a probably interesting idea to do it. But I would say to you that I, I, I'm dubious about the environmental because it's, I find it impossible to believe that after seventy-three years of, and it's even an oil receiving place. And I understand you're saying you've probably taken care of those tanks, that you need some really serious, um, environmental questions answered about that site before you say yes.
Well, not really. I mean, the township doesn't have any jurisdiction over that, Cheryl. So if they don't have clean soils, that the state won't let them develop it. And that's an issue that the state DEP handles, not the township.
I understand. And that will be done? Who triggers that?
We, 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 we're not gonna be able to sell houses here if there's a, if there's contamination on the property or contamination that can't be cleaned up. We're building, we're building houses in Exton on a former, uh, Superfund site right now. So it took forty years to clean it up, but it, it, you know, we're confident that we'll address the environment. If there is any further environmental, that'll be, it'll be addressed.
Is that the old Mustang?
That's our responsibility, not the township's.
Eli, is that the old Musk, Mustang site?
Uh, that's, that's correct, Cheryl. It's, I, I call it continental refrigeration, but some people do call it Mustang.
Yeah, I know. I once had it for sale. Okay. All right, um, I would be very interested in that, to see the next zoning meeting. That would be nice to get that done. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Are there any other questions?
There's somebody in the audience.
Hi, there's an.
You have to come up to the microphone so the people can hear you.
I'm gonna sing. No, um, I'm Lisa Carini, one oh three Arrow Drive. And I built a home here back in twenty sixteen. So at this point, I'm a pretty significant taxpayer in this township. And I just want to say that I really would like to see this happen. I can imagine what that could look like. Um, with all due respect, wonderful truck business that you have there. I just see this being a wonderful amenity. And, um, I can also imagine, I, I don't disagree with Ms. Kennedy in terms of the retail. Obviously, you don't have a plan to do anything in that site, but for the Wedgewood Shopping Center, could that help revitalize that or attract people to put some like significant businesses there? We don't have anything to eat here besides pizza. So, um, I just wanted to give a very favorable comment that I really would like to see this happen. You're welcome.
Any additional residential in proximity to these shopping centers will help those shopping centers. It's pretty simple to understand and realize that retail drives off of residential.
So at this time, is it that we ask for the, uh, draft for the, of the ordinance to be presented?
I mean, if you guys have to decide whether you're willing to go forward with it and if so, and that's, you know, if there's a consensus or a majority of the board that would like to see this particular, you know, use, then that's one option, yeah.
I would propose a motion that this board, uh, makes a decision to allow this to, uh, be an, uh, to be developed, the overlay to be developed. Is that the right wording that we're looking for?
Sure, that's an appropriate motion.
We're looking for that. And would that go to our planning commission?
Well, that's a motion if somebody wants to second it.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Everybody? We're in agreement of that. Everybody's in favor of
Everybody's in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So we we would submit that to you. You would send it to the plant. We'd start with the planning commission. Is that how you want it?
Yeah, why don't Ray and I talk and we'll get back in touch with you about exactly the process.
Thank you very much, folks. Really appreciate it. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
I've got a bridge in Brooklyn I'd like to talk to. Thank you. Great to see you. Take care.
Good night.
Good night.
Hi.
Hey.
Hi.
See ya.
Night.
Good night.
Are there any citizens to be heard in the audience? Or on Zoom or? I think Cheryl, does she have a comment? Oh, one off.
Ms. Spalding?
Oh, I didn't realize my hand was up. Oh, my only, I guess my only question, I think that's a good choice. My only question was, didn't, didn't, didn't you say, and I'm going back in time, and honestly, this particular property, I think this is fine. I am more concerned about the overall zoning going on in the township. Didn't as a part of that, you decide that you wouldn't have any overlays?
That was Ray Oat's plan.
That was Ray Oat's plan? Okay, so you may have overlays in the township under your new plan.
We didn't get that far.
Oh.
We focused on Lincoln Highway with design guidelines and the uses for the different areas. We had started kicking around. We we also landscaping on Lincoln Highway, all that stuff. We'd started kicking around uses for the other five zoning districts, which we were going to keep as they were to expedite the process, but we're going to make some changes to them. It would still be one through five rather than zoning blue, orange, green. I don't know if that makes any sense, but we we had gotten we got the ball moving, but the question you just asked, we had not gotten to.
Uh, my only concern is, you know, this is a once every what 10 year kind of a thing. And to see, and 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 I know we weren't happy with Ray Oat's plan, and I don't disagree with that. But, you know, you're working on it yourselves, and that's certainly, you know, commendable. But what I don't want to see is, I don't want to see us rush through uh, the new zoning without the whole process, you know, without a long process of considering it, even if we have to get um, additional time from the county. What is the process? Ms. Camp, I mean, it goes through the process with these people. Then it goes to the county.
And then once they have a final draft, first of all, they're not rushing. They're taking their time. It's a very tedious process. Um, once the final document is ready and they have an ordinance from beginning to end, it has to be sent to their planning commission, and then it has to be sent to the county planning commission. And then there has to be an ordinance hearing. Um, so that process, we haven't, we haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay, and when is a copy? I I assume once a copy of the final document is done, that it's public?
Sure. Yep. And they probably would be
Anything public at this point?
No, it's not.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we, we're not there yet.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was my, that was my question.
Thank you, Cheryl.
So moving ahead, we're looking now at an ordinance and resolutions for consideration. Well, oh. Oh, but we still have
So we we went there and and I just wanted to make one, one comment. Regarding the PennDOT closure, and we literally just found this out this afternoon. Well, I, and 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 the word was it will not be the 12th. There will be either tomorrow, Monday, Tuesday, within very soon and upcoming days. The detour route and the dates are going to be changed. PennDOT will be making an official statement.
Wow.
So June 12th is not going to be the day. So we literally found that out this afternoon.
Wow.
Just wanted to
Ready to get it over with. All right, thank you.
Now we can go to ordinance resolution. Sorry, Ms.
That's okay.
Do citizens to be heard?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, they've been. Yes. Okay, so now we're looking at ordinances and resolutions for consideration. The first one is a request for a consideration to approve Resolution 2023-12 for the disposition of township records.
So moved.
Action.
Real motion. Everybody agrees that we have to do this at a public Board of Commissioners meeting in order to uh, follow the Act 428 of 1968. So that we're asking now for a vote. We have a motion on the floor from Josh Young, a second by Lorraine Tendaro. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So moved. The next resolution is for consideration to approve Resolution 2023-13, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Cowan Township declaring an emergency condition pursuant to Section 1802 of the First Class Township Code 53 PS 56802, and authorizing the township to enter a contract for the temporary shoring of a retaining wall along the south side of Geo Carlson Boulevard between North Bailey Road and James Buchanan Drive.
And I can explain a little bit, Ms. Kennedy. So Mr. Stackhouse had contacted me probably um, beginning of last week, I think it was. Um, that there is a retaining wall along Geo Carlson Boulevard that is in danger of collapse. And, you know, as you know, your normal procurement process takes quite a while.
Yes.
Um, you have to advertise it. You have to receive the, you know, usually give bidders about a month's time. You then have to figure out who the lowest responsible bidder is, and then you have to give all these notices to proceed, et cetera. So there is a provision in the First Class Code that if there is an emergency situation that could create a danger to the public health and safety, that you can um, if you declare that there is an emergency condition, then you can forego doing the the normal public advertising and bid process. So that's what this resolution is for. Um, the good news is, is that we have made some strides working with a property owner whose property would be impacted by having to go and do the temporary shoring of the retaining wall. Um, Stephanie DeForno, we had a conversation with yesterday. And then I drafted an easement agreement and we sent it to her today. And again, this is just the first step of the process to temporarily shore up the wall so it doesn't fall onto the road, so the road doesn't have to be closed. So this resolution is what's required under the First Class Code for you to be able to declare what the emergency is so that you can go in and get a contractor to to do the work as soon as we have the necessary easement from the property owner.
And I understand as soon as we get this uh, approved, that they would like to try to begin working on it as soon as possible because it is a public health issue we're concerned. And we don't have time to go to bid, or so we need a motion to accept this resolution. So moved by Commissioner Evans.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So moved.
Do you want me to stay for the last item? Five for the property one?
If you
Sure, absolutely.
So for the Finance Department, we're requesting for consideration to approve accounts payable bills. This for checks 50026 through 50018.
So moved to pay the bills.
Second.
So moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tendaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move, granted. Minutes to be approved and acknowledged for a request for the consideration to approve the April 27th, 2023 Board of Commissioner minutes.
I request to table these. I had a bunch of little things. And I never sent the email. They're little things, but I I wanted to make sure I get it out.
We have a request to table this on consideration to approve the minutes until next meeting. Commissioner Evans.
Can we get a motion for a table?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to table the minutes.
A motion by Joshua.
Table.
Second by Commissioner Tendaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion granted.
Excuse me.
Okay, so now we're gonna have reports from the boards and commission updates. Um, Parks and Recreation, wow. They do a lot, just like Commissioner Evans said in the last report. Without them, I I don't know how this community or how this township is to be so vital because they just have a way of bringing everybody together under one umbrella. And I I'm hearing that they had a good turnout for our first movie series for the summer and had possibly close to 40 people in attendance at the the movie hook the other night out on the lawn at Municipal Park. There are other movies that are slated for the summer. There's a whole list of movies. I think the next one is, uh, June 2nd, if I'm correct. I lost my page here. Yeah. So there's a whole, June 2nd, we'll be showing no, June 2nd, I'm sorry, is a concert with Jimmy Jorge and the Latin Express. And then July 7th, uh, another movie night for the children and families on the lawn is Puss in Boots. And then we're gonna have our August 1st National Night Out. All these things are in the making and planning and uh, we also know that the Community Day will be on Saturday, September 9th. Um, so we have a lot going on and everybody's excited to be outdoors. Understand that the flea market was a success last Saturday. They always do a great job. Hopefully, everybody found some hidden treasures there. And don't forget to mark your calendars for July 20th for our historical uh, Chester County agricultural event, which is going to be featuring Spackman Farm. We're looking for everybody to come out. The tours are gonna begin, uh, 5:30 till 7:00. It's gonna be quite an adventure. Um, they're they're putting on a great production behind the scenes. I don't know what it looks like, but uh, it's gonna be live and you want to be there. As far as with the cog group, we're we're still working on the scholarships. That's interesting because now we're looking for legal advice as to how to implement these scholarships so that they don't um impact the finances of cog and how we can properly use them to grant scholarship to some of our students in various school districts that are interested in going into studying government, uh, anything in that area of municipality. So, I don't know, Kristen Camp, did they reach out to you? Oh, okay. Okay, so that's what they're, I guess that's the holdup now. They don't have the right legal advice to see if they can use the funds in that uh, capacity. Uh, also Membership Drive is a big piece uh, for cog, uh, being as though it's being reorganized under new management. Uh, we're working on a website design so that people can actually go out and, you know, see what's going on with cog. Some of the uh, great people that come in from around the county that really educate, uh, the cog group on different aspects of development and economic, you know, uh, strategies throughout the county. Because there's a lot of business development, a lot of housing development. I mean, the the county is booming. I mean, I mean, everywhere you look, I mean, houses are going up. And you know, we're not going to make any more land, so everybody's trying to make good, good use of the land that's available. So we're gonna see this, you know, ongoing development in for the next probably five to 10 years. It's it's just, it's astronomical. I mean, what's happening around our neighborhoods. Um, we also are still kind of tossing around the animal shelter rescue mission. Uh, cog, I mean, they're really sold on that idea of having a, a animal shelter. One that every municipality can share in the expense of, instead of us paying out exorbitant amount of money to um the SPCA, which they think that for some reason, that they're double dipping and they're, you know, they're charging the townships a lot of money and a lot of times they're not really doing the jobs that they say they should be doing. So that's what they're researching, and that's pretty much what we're focusing our, most of our time on over the last few months. Do we have anybody here to give a report on the municipal authority in the absence of, uh? So we'll, we'll have that the next time. Also, Dar, anybody? Fire board, do we have a report?
I think it's, uh,
Earl Paul, okay.
Yeah.
The Historical Commission?
Wow, yeah. Hi, thank you. Um, yeah, the Historical Commission met on Wednesday, April 19th. We had a quorum with 11, uh, 10 of our 11 members in attendance. Nine in person, one by way of Zoom, plus three guests. We heard updates from all of our subcommittees. A great concern to everyone is the rain gutter that has been left hanging semi-detached along the front of the Spackman Davis farmhouse. Sends out the message to potential vandals that no one's keeping an eye on the property. There were questions also, um, of whether any open space funds would be used to uh, potentially replace the farmhouse roof and repair the porch as this possibility had come up at a VOC meeting a couple of months back, but there were no updates. Uh, Chair Paul Stevens shared that our Historical Commission leadership had a nice chat with a potential buyer for the Buchanan House and thought that he had a good plan for the property. If, uh, the potential buyer were to move forward with it, the Historical Commission would consider giving him a positive recommendation. There's been new progress in our efforts to get Edges Mill Milling District on the National Register. We've been also been coordinating with Megan Menish at the Chester County Historical net Preservation Network to incorporate some tweaks to the Historical Preservation Ordinance to ensure we're remaining compliant for future certified local government eligibility. Our connection to Old Town Historical Society has never been stronger. I'm happy to say that they had a beautiful weather and a real nice turnout for last Saturday's annual flea market. Lots of great finds. Alicia and I came away with a very cool birdhouse and a beautiful print of Spackman Davis Farm. But the main event of our meeting was planning for what Ms. Kennedy, uh, mentioned, the July 20th Historic Town Tour and Village Walk will be hosting at Spackman Davis Farm. Uh, we voted to form a steering subcommittee to develop possibilities for consideration by the entire commission. And that steering subcom has been working on a presentation to share with the Board of Commissioners. Under additional business, I'll I'll be asking if we can be put on the agenda for the 25th to share it with everybody. Unless something pressing and unexpected comes up for the Historical Commission between now and then, we won't be taking one, anything else until after that event. Uh, we could potentially have 350 people show up for this, and there's lots of eyes to dot and lots of Ts to cross. Uh, but wow, what a great, great way of getting Cowan Township out into the public
Yeah.
uh, view. And, you know, we're getting recognized by the county and and I'm just thrilled. We have an amazing group of people working on the Historical Commission. Our next scheduled meeting is next Wednesday, May 17th at 7:00 PM. You can join us right here live or from home on Zoom. We're a fun group who like getting things done. Please consider coming to one of our meetings.
All right. All right, do we have a report for Lincoln Highway?
Okay. Actually, um, myself, Mark and Adam met, um, last, no, two nights ago to start talking about, uh, getting Lincoln Highway restarted. Um, the thing we're, we're exploring now is trying to create an outside group that would be run by the businesses where the commissioners participate, but the group would run itself. Instead of this being a township forward uh, group, it would be a business forward group that the township participates in. So, um, we're working on that. We, um, we've Adam had discussions with Commissioner Moskowitz from Chester County, uh, who uh, did a lot of development in Phoenixville. Um, and, uh, she would be one of our guest speakers at one of the first meetings. Um, we have some interest in talking to, um, some other, other people as we move along. Um, and, uh, focusing on Lincoln Highway, but the the big thing is trying to get the group restarted and then hand the ball to them and let them, uh, run with it while we participate.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Is Ingleside Golf Course? Just wanted to say thank you to Nicole Shannon. We're getting a lot of good PR on the work that she's doing. Our next meeting is May 22nd, which is Monday at 5:45 PM. It will be at the Golf Course Clubhouse. Feel free to stop by and come to one of our meetings. It would be great to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask real quick Thank you. I just wanted to ask real quick, Adam and I had been speaking briefly about a pilot program to see if we can generate any interest from some of our area. I would say maybe middle school, high school, preferably, students maybe in the fall to see if we could get them interested in coming on as junior ambassadors. And what that does look like for the township was the legality in it, like bringing students into some of the planning meetings so that they can see how we operate, so we can begin to educate them and let them see, you know, what it's like to become, you know, possibly in the future, you know, a commissioner here at Calhoun Township, or to be on one of our committees and how they serve and how they operate. So I think that was the first piece, just looking at the legality of it and to see if something that we would be interested in incorporating.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any additional business here? Anybody in Zoom world got any questions? I see Mark DeYoung. Oh, his hand went down.
Mr. DeYoung?
Hi, everybody. It's Mark DeYoung, twenty people run road. Josh, I have a phone call question. It sounds like you're moving along with a plan to develop, I guess, Lurda, how you to market that out throughout beyond county township. Is that what you're, do I assume that correctly?
Mark, I couldn't hear you very well, but I think that you said, did you, are we developing a plan to market Lurda? Is that what your question was?
Basically, yes.
Okay, yeah, that's why we're getting this group restarted, and we want it to be business-focused so that it's not just a township directing businesses. So, yes, twofold approach. One, get this group up and running. Two, use this group to help us market the Lurda program. And it forgot, it slipped me at the time, but our first two speakers would be Marion Moskowitz and the Chester County Economic Development Council. So those are the two that we're going after as soon as we get, step one is get the group reorganized. Step two is, is there anybody from that group that thinks that we should invite other people and have a second organization meeting? And then step three would be Commissioner Moskowitz and the Economic Development Council. So we're hoping to do that in kind of rapid succession.
Okay, that sounds great, because the real deal is you have to get it outside of Calhoun, all the way off Chester County, maybe even Delco, for businesses to fill this space up. You can't market within your own county, your own township.
Couldn't agree with you more, Mark. Couldn't agree with you more.
You haven't been marketing business for a long time, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. DeYoung. Anybody else in Zoom world have any questions or any audience?
Yeah.
Is someone?
I think it's Daniel Hagan. Who?
For Haggins?
Yes, all right, me again. Just Daniel Hagan, two seventeen Park Drive. I noticed up the street they started working on this water management to feed more water into that basin. That's a little bit up the road from me. I just didn't know if there was any plans also to do any improvements on the basin itself.
So unfortunately, Mr. Haggins, our engineer is not here this evening. He will be at the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
You're on Park Drive, so we are trying to replace that whole stormwater system down there, but he would have better ability to answer that question that I was.
Okay, so, and that's, I think, what, the, in two weeks, right?
Correct.
All right, I will be sure to be available for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all the questions we have? Okay. Our additional business that we need to conduct is, number one, a request for consideration to approve D E, I guess it's Jamel Inc., in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-six cents for the twenty twenty-three road repaid, repainting pavement markings. And I know Mr. Stackhouse has presented three proposals that he's gotten for that job, and I think that his recommendation is to have us support him in a motion to to have D E Jamel Inc. Proposals, you know, presented because they would like to get started as soon as possible. I think the other two proposals came in, one was like at nineteen thousand. I have it written out somewhere.
I haven't yet.
Yeah, but they're in our packet, and so they gave the best.
Yeah, the next one was nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, and then thirty thousand, three oh nine.
Yes. So, good job, Ray, and if we're in agreement, they wanna get started as soon as possible. And what they're gonna do is go out throughout the township and repaint the road, strippings in the road where they're starting to fade away, wherever we need yellow lines repainted, surface the whole roads. Yes.
I would make a motion to approve D E Jamel Inc. in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-six cents for the twenty twenty-three road repaving pavement, pavement markings.
Second.
Has been, a motion's been made by Commissioner Evans and second by Commissioner Evans. Everybody in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved for the bid for a D E Jamel in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty thousand, fifty-six cents to begin the repaving, repainting pavement markings. The second is a request for consideration to approve a request from three-two-four-six West Summit Avenue seeking relief from Calhoun Township Code Chapter seventy-four dash five G one, which requires a minimum of a five-foot setback to the property line.
Commissioners, this is Ray Stackhouse. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you should have in your packet a request from the owner of that property had submitted a permit to extend his driveway to the rear of the yard off its current driveway. As stated, the ordinance requires a five-foot setback, which the homeowner is not able to comply with based on his property. I do believe the property owner is in the audience.
Yes, he is, Ray.
Okay, so he could speak a little bit more of why he, you know, why he wants to do that and why he could act like that.
Hello, good evening. Hi. Hello.
Hi.
Yes.
Like that?
Yep.
The reason I wanna do this is I have a rather unusual classic sports car. It's very low. It's about as long as those two desks and about as high. The moment it's in storage, the storage unit, which I'm paying rent on, I would like to have it in a shed behind my house, which I already have the shed built. But I'd like to extend the driveway, is, I think in your packet you should have a photo of a proposed, the proposed one, but there should be a photo of what it should look like when it's finished. And this would alleviate me paying storage fees, which go up periodically, and give me an easier access to the car to move it to and from the front of my house, like for cleaning. I'm not a mechanic, so I don't do major maintenance, but I can do light maintenance, like adding coolant when it needs oil, add oil, but I don't change oil because I don't have the facilities to do that. That's basically it. I would just basically like to be able to move the car to and from back of my house.
It looks like you provided something to Mr. Stackhouse about your conversation with your neighbor that he understands what you're proposing and potentially that there might be some damage to some trees, but he's, it doesn't sound like he was opposed to it.
Yes, he has several pine trees on his property. The roots extend into my property, and actually, they're hitting my house. With this new drive, this two extension driveway going in the back, it will tear up the roots on my side of the property. They will be eliminated. I've already talked to my neighbor, told him this would happen, and it could damage his trees or kill them. I would be willing to pay for any removal of those trees or fix anything that happens if this project goes forward. He is in agreement with that. He said he would be okay with that.
So I am a mechanic, so what kind of car is it?
I've been dying to know. It's a Caterham Super Seven. It's made in England. It's hand-built. It took a year to build. And originally, it was designed in nineteen fifty-seven by Lotus Company, Lotus Cars. They built it from nineteen fifty-seven to nineteen seventy, and the dealer, and they were gonna end the production in nineteen seventy, seventy-one. The dealer in London called Caterham said, "We've got a lot of orders for this car." So they cut a deal with Lotus, bought all the equipment and all the rights to the car, and they have been building it ever since in various designations and various engines. Mine has a Ford engine.
Okay.
Why didn't we get a picture of it?
Yeah, we could have fell into the car, right?
I've got it on my cellphone. I can show you a picture. It's a lot of fun to drive.
Oh, sure.
It was, in the sixties, it was outlawed in racing because it was too fast. It was beating Porsches and Corvettes because it's so lightweight. I don't push it that hard. I don't wanna kill myself.
I mean, looking at the plans, I mean, it doesn't look like it's really requiring that much for what you already have. My concern, maybe a question to our attorney, is that, you know, legally, or should we have something in writing so that this doesn't come back to say that the adjoining owner, he's saying he's in agreement with all this, he doesn't have any problem with it, but he doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, that's up to you. The code doesn't require, you know, the standard of the code doesn't require that the neighboring property owner consent. I think sometimes that you're getting yourself into a difficult situation with that because a lot of times neighbors won't. He indicated in his email that the neighbor wasn't comfortable putting it in writing, I guess.
Right. He said he spoke with his wife, and they just weren't comfortable with putting it in writing. He's a police officer, so we get along okay, but he's okay with me doing it. He just didn't feel comfortable putting it in writing.
Okay.
And I would assume that if he was opposed to it, that he would have been here tonight, so.
And like, I agree with him. Anything happens to those trees that he wants taken care of, I will do it.
Excellent.
I would make a motion to grant the request for waiver from, for thirty-two forty-six West Summit Avenue, seeking relief from Calhoun Code Chapter seventy-five dash four G one, waiving the requirement of five-foot setback from the property line.
Second.
Okay, so the motion has been granted by Commissioner Young and second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see this thing.
Commissioners, this is Ray Stackhouse. Just real quick, I was having trouble getting on earlier or speaking. I just, for point of clarification, the twenty eighteen International Residential Code does require sprinklers for town.
Yeah, we did get that, sprinklers are required.
Thank you, Ray.
Do we have any other public comments?
Do I need to ask, now that the Historical Commission be added to the?
We have it. We'll add it. Mr. DeYoung?
All right, just wanna say thank you to the township for the street sweepers coming down this week. Made a big difference on our street. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. DeYoung. We're getting the streets swept. We're getting the lines painted. It's gonna look pretty spiffy around here in a couple of weeks. So compliments to our road crew. Mr. Stackhouse, you got these guys working, and everything's moving in a direction we wanna see. So thank you and thank your crew for, you know, getting the roads swept, getting the trees up, just cleaning up the township and all the special beautification projects that are going on around the township. Any further comments or anyone else like to speak from the audience? Okay, so I may get a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
So moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Young. Everybody in favor? Say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.